Councilwoman Fuller will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity that we can serve this community. We would handle this meeting in a Christ-like manner. Whatever we do here, we give you the glory and we give you the honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mr. Siskel, if I can join you in the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God and in Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
President.
President.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
And Councilman Logan.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference of November 11th, 2019, and the city council meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2019? Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
Chair.
Councilwoman.
I just want to thank Mayor Perkins for joining me yesterday for the Junior Achievement Inspires Lunch, and the kids loved it. And after you left, they were asked, the person that was sitting next to you, he was asked what were his highlights, and the first thing he said was, "I got to sit next to Mayor Perkins and talk to him," so thank you for that.
Thank you for the invite.
Do you need a member of the council? Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
Yes, I do have some comments, and I do want to introduce someone. The first comment, as I mentioned last week, in preparation for the upcoming 2020 census, legislation has been submitted requesting council approval to form a Citizens Complete Committee. The committee will work in subcommittees to assist with disseminating census information to the public. We still need, this is a gentle nudge to the council members, we still need council members to appoint one member to each subcommittee and submit your names to the CAO. The subcommittees are, again, healthcare and education, government, niche communities and neighborhoods, faith-based and nonprofit organizations, business and industry, public relations and marketing, and census facilities and digital access. The kickoff meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 5th, at 5:00 PM in the large conference room on the second floor of Government Plaza. This meeting is open to the public, and anyone interested in learning about our volunteering alongside the appointed committee members are welcome to attend. The next point I'd like to make is an introduction. Mr. Chairman, myself and Chief Raymond have conducted an extensive competitive process to search for our new deputy chief for the Shreveport Police Department. The person we've selected is a military veteran who has been in law enforcement for over 20 years, and 19 of those serving on the Shreveport Police Department. He has worked in patrol, mounted patrol, and investigations. At this time, I would like to introduce you to Deputy Police Chief Antoine White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the mayor's comments that Antoine and I attended the police academy together, and I'm very excited that he was interested in submitting his name for the position of deputy chief. He's going to be very much an asset to the department in my administration. He and I have a good working relationship already, and I look forward to the things that come within the police department.
Good afternoon. I want to say first it's an honor to be here today, and I'm really grateful and blessed that the chief and the mayor selected me for this position. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, and I think the most important thing that you need to know is that I'm a man of faith, and I think that's the most important thing that I could ever say. The mayor also touched on my career with the Shreveport Police Department. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention my better half, my wife, my biggest supporter. She's encouraged me throughout this whole process, so I just want to acknowledge her as well. Once again, I've been with the Shreveport Police Department for about 20 years now. During the course of my career, I've served in many capacities, starting with Area 3 Patrol, the west side of Shreveport. From there, I went to the Mounted Patrol Unit, downtown Shreveport, the downtown unit, and from there, I went to Captain Trewyve High School for about three years as school resource officer. From that point, I remained under the youth services umbrella as a juvenile investigator. In the last two years, I've served as the sex crime unit supervisor.
Deputy Alson, on behalf of the council, thank you very much for your service to the city and for your willingness to assume your responsibilities.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell a quick embarrassing story about Chief Raymond. I'll take the opportunity really quick. So, we were doing interviews, and Antoine shared a story about them at the academy. Apparently, the instructors at the academy, when Chief Raymond was going through as a cadet, told him that he would be the next police chief of the Shreveport Police Department. So, it's been a long time coming for him. So, yeah, Chief, I just wanted to share that, say you've always been an overachiever, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford.
Oh, he has some more questions.
Deputy Chief, before you leave, I can ask you a couple of questions. I'm sorry. I just feel a little compelled to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Give me your department assignments again, please.
Okay. The Foundation of Being a Police Officer Patrol, Area 3, yes, the west side of Shreveport, Queen's Bar and Moore Town area, Pines Road area. From there, Mounted Patrol Unit, and also time as a school resource officer at Captain Trewyve High School. I spent a little over, nearly three years as a juvenile investigator in youth services, and the last two years as the supervisor in the sex crimes unit.
Let me ask you, and I know you had to go through the chief and proper protocol, what do you see as the primary policing challenge that we have in Shreveport?
Primary policing challenge? I think that is building a relationship with the public, trusting relationship, which goes both ways in reference to the police and the people that we're tasked to serve.
What is your, what are your primary goals for yourself?
At this particular point, and I thank out of respect for Chief Raymond and the mayor, I would like to meet with him and have him share, let him share his vision for the city of Shreveport. My goal is to be, is to serve in whatever capacity that I can to actually reach those expectations that the mayor and the chief have set forth for me, to help them carry out his, to help the chief carry out his goals, basically, at this point.
Do you, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the broader.
Yes, sir.
The broader policing apparatus.
Okay.
The various divisions that experience counts. Do you feel, do you feel like you're prepared to deal with the other areas in which you have not had experience?
I will say this, sir. Prior to becoming a police officer, I had, I didn't know how to be a police officer until I received the training and I was trained. Basically, over the last 20 years, anything, any assignment that I've been given, I've been successful in those assignments. So, this is no different. I attack everything that I do with tenacity, and I will do the same as the deputy chief of police.
In regards to the spike in crime that we are experiencing now, especially violent crime and shootings, what's your thought on how do we, how do we move forward in addressing those very fore-reaching issues?
Each and every day, and I'm in the trenches. I've been, like I said, I've been there for 20 years, but I've recently promoted to sergeant, so I'm not far from actually being out there, boots on the ground, on the street, so to speak, seeing exactly what's going on in the community. The men and women of the Shreveport Police Department, they work hard each and every day, and will continue to do that under Chief Raymond and my leadership. As far as an actual plan, once again, I just think I would, I believe in being decent and in order, and I would like to sit down with my chief and have him share his vision with me, and we can speak about this more, so we can be on one accord when we speak on this, and when I, when I answer that question.
Well, I've had a one-on-one with the chief and during his protest confirmation. I feel comfortable with the chief, especially feel comfortable with his knowledge. You know, we just want to give him opportunity, because we got to address some of the criminal issues that are now existing. The public are getting very anxious and weary.
Yes, sir.
That they can't come out of their houses, that they can't have a normal life. They feel like they're being held hostage with all this going on. I'm really looking for some aggressive policing to address some of the stuff, and I hope and trust that you and the chief work together to make this happen, and engage the community as best you can.
Yes, sir. And I do know, I do know that it's important to me, as well as the chief in reference, to have, and the community, their input is very key, and for us, you know, in us addressing the crime problem that we are having here in Shreveport. So, that's very important to us as well.
The chief has open-door policy. I trust you have one as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm a servant leader. Yes, sir.
Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, I just, last comment, not for you. I just wanted to recognize, we have Bishop Brandon in the room as well, sitting right there, wanted to recognize him, and that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
But the chief will, Chief Raymond, you will listen to and engage with, if he has vision also, am I correct on that, sir? On his, he may have some vision or some input on the vision also, so I'm sure that you two can, all right. That's all I had. Okay. We did have some nominees for, or shall I say, some appointments that we need to, do those now, this time?
I don't think there's appointments that you can find. I think the clerk's report will indicate some recommendations.
It could, but if we could, we have suspended the rules before, and I think that if they're there, we can meet them now. Mr. Bradford, unless there's something else that you?
No, no, I was asking, Mr. Chairman, I'm making the point that the clerk report indicates several nominees for the mayor to be confirmed. I was, I was, now, we can hear from him like we have, but I'm not prepared to confirm anybody.
Okay.
If that's the desire that you have.
Mr. Chairman, the only person we don't have here today is Mr. Wade Davis for appointment for the report director, and he'll be here at the first meeting in December.
Mr. Chairman, I see Mr. Matt Snyder near me. Mr. Snyder, if you can follow.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, to keep us in order, let's suspend the rules and hear the clerk's report.
I move that we suspend the rule to hear the clerk's report. Check.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by the vice chair to hear clerk's report. Motion carries with six.
That was for the purpose of hearing it.
Please, yes, sir.
You ready to hear it?
Please.
The mayor has appointed the following persons to the following boards or commissions. The Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority Board, Mr. Parker Brown. Shreveport Boja Convention and Tourists Board, Mr. Matt Snyder. The Cattle Parish Port Commission, Mr. Joshua Williams, and the Director of the Airport, Mr. Wade Davis.
Mr. Matt?
Mr. Snyder, welcome. How are you, sir?
Doing well.
Would you tell the council about the position for which you've been appointed? Councilman Flory would like your name and address first.
Yes, Matt Snyder, 311 Buttonwood Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana. 71106.
Mr. Snyder, what has the mayor appointed you to do for the city?
To represent the city on the Tourism Board, the Convention and Tourism Committee Board.
And for those that don't know, tell us a bit about your background and your business place.
I own a marketing company called Pinpoint Local Marketing, where I represent around 20 different local businesses in their day-to-day marketing. I've also, I built that company on believing in being community, being involved in your community as a basis of marketing. I influence my companies to be active in their community as a way of marketing, instead of buying big, big national or normal marketing buys. We get active in the community as our way to market our businesses. Through that, over the years, we started creating events, me and partners of mine, and we have six events in the community that we do annually. I also consult on other events in the area, and believe that Shreveport has to have current and positive events in the community if we're going to compete with other cities like ours.
I will say that I know from personal experience that your events are well-done, and I appreciate what you and your partners do for the community.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Bradford.
Thank you. We had at the previous meeting, Stacia Brown with the Tourism Bureau, if you were here, and she gave us some highlights of what she would like to see happen. How do you see Shreveport? What is our potential as a tourism destination?
I think Shreveport has an amazing potential as a tourism destination. I think it's important to look at any organization that has a large amount of taxpayer money going into it to reach a goal and make sure that money is going towards the goal in the best way fit. I think that the Tourism Bureau has a great potential to really help the culture and tourism of Shreveport. Just looking at how you do that and how you move maybe into things that are more current and compete with the things that are happening in cities and areas around the country that are competing with us in those areas.
You've engaged the Shreveport Tourism operation before, I trust?
I know them all, yes.
So, we're not, it appears that we're not getting, I think, the activity that we have the potential of getting.
I would agree with that.
What do you see as the weaknesses and the challenges for that not happening?
I think utilizing funds in responsible, smart ways is.
Utilizing what now?
Utilizing funds.
Funds?
Funds, and making sure the money goes to things that we're getting solid results from. I think putting pressure on results and looking for results, and what does success look like in our area, I think that's what I would want to see on that board. What are we doing from a tourism perspective that is garnering results, and are those the results we're looking for in the future?
Do you feel strongly that you can contribute to?
I will say this. I've been very successful with creating events and keeping events going without support from tax money or anything else over the years, and I feel that I have a very good expertise in the area of entertainment and producing events in this area. I think I will be a great asset to that team. A lot of the people on the team are from hotels and whatnot. I think I would represent a new voice and a new background to that board.
Snyder, thank you for your responses.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Snyder, how do you measure success?
Councilman Flory, I mean, that's a quick, I might have to think on that one for you.
I'm asking because, well, tell me what the major goal and how the Tourism Bureau measures success for our community.
I think the Tourism Bureau measures success in one way by hotel tax funding and hotel revenue, and I understand that that's where their funds come from, and that makes sense. And I think that there's a lot of ways to measure success.
Can you give me one example of something else you think they should be considering?
Yes, I think they should be looking at the growth of our culture in Shreveport, and does it stand up to the growing culture of other cities in our state and in our areas? I think that should be monitored constantly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I just appreciate what you have done and what you're willing to commit yourself to service to the city. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker Brown.
Mr. Brown, welcome. Thank you. How's everybody doing today?
Yeah, we're well.
Good, good.
Thank you for being here. If you'd also tell us about the position to which the mayor's appointed you and your background. I appreciate it.
Do you want to address first?
Yeah, we should ask everybody the same stuff, at least to start.
Just making sure, keep it honest. Parker Brown, 8706 Glenmore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. And Mayor Perkins, I guess, nominated me for the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority. That's a mouthful. And I guess, what questions?
Tell the council and the audience about your professional background.
Okay, okay. I, I own and manage properties, so I guess I'd be a property owner in Martin Luther King area, Allendale, Queensborough, Sunset Acres, and I see the blight issues that we have every day, and it's affected my business. And the longer I've been in it, the, I guess, dealing with that allows me to operate my business more effectively. So, it's, and it's not only a business issue, it's a City of Shreveport issue. It drives down property values, and it causes, I guess, flight to other parts of town, and I believe we have the same land mass as Baton Rouge currently, and we have not, like I said, I'm not only getting specifics, but I know we don't have near the population, the tax base to support that, and we continue to move south, and we've got to do something about it. So, that's why I'm interested in being on this authority to help the problem we've got. So, I guess, as far as my professional background, so I kind of got off on what I would like to accomplish. I own and manage properties throughout Shreveport. Okay, I'm done.
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned two neighborhoods that represent the district that I represent.
Yes, sir.
Specifically, you say you manage property, own property. What do you, rent houses or something?
Yes.
Okay. What area of MLK do you rent houses?
I guess down David Rains and MLK, like that.
So, you buy, you buy properties that are?
Yes.
That have been adjudicated or?
Well, mostly not, but I have, I have bought adjudicated properties, and I believe the adjudicated property system is flawed. I believe, and working with this authority and the city of Shreveport, I believe that we do a poor job of when someone does not pay their taxes or hasn't paid them in a few years, not informing them that the taxes have not been paid. I believe a lot of the reason that these properties become adjudicated is because citizens are not informed of their rights, or you miss a bill, and then all of a sudden, someone's telling you, "We own your house." And in that situation, it's not a good situation for a property owner to be in, and I feel that that's an epidemic all over Shreveport.
So, how many properties do you think you own in MLK area, and then how many you own in Allendale, Glitshead area?
I hear you. I don't know, like, I would say maybe 30 and 20.
Well, describe to me, if you can.
Yes, sir.
Quality of those properties.
I think the property's in good shape. Will you keep them up?
Central air and heat?
Yes, sir.
Are they?
Some are just central heat, but we provide air conditioning and.
Are they brick homes or?
Some are brick, okay, some are brick, some are pure and bone.
And what percentage of those houses are occupied?
100%.
100% occupied?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate you providing homes for the residents of those areas, but I want to, you know, visit some of those. So, what, you say David Rains and MLK area, you got more, a lot, a few?
Yeah, I mean, Dorktown, Lund, Miller Street, Anderson.
All over the city?
Knox, I'm just, in the Cooper Road area.
Okay.
But one of the biggest issues that I see is that there are so many citizens that are paying rent currently that should be buying houses.
I agree.
But they cannot get the proper funding from a bank and institution to do this. I understand everyone's got regulations, but I think that that's another crucial issue, is getting through the red tape and helping individuals be able to purchase homes instead of rent homes.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think it's.
The cost of renting is almost as, you could almost buy homes for what rent goes for these days.
Well, you can for less, in my opinion.
So, your contribution to this authority, you feel strongly that you can make a tangible impact on the way that our organization is operating?
Well, I mean, I don't necessarily know if I'm going to come in and change the way it's operating. Yeah, I think Mr. Orson Oates has done, you know, certainly a good job, but I would like, what I'm saying is I'd like to contribute, and I'd like to be a part of the change that needs to happen to make Shreveport a better place.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you've got skin in the game. That is, you've got properties in areas that need to be upgraded in a lot of ways, and you, I feel, would contribute to restoring a better quality, not only homes, but a better quality of environment in the areas that you have properties. So, I look forward to speaking with you further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford.
Councilman Flory.
Mr. Brown, you do recognize that y'all have practically no authority on that committee, don't you?
Well, that's fine, but I mean, we can still help.
No, I'm just saying.
Oh.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be aware of that.
I can assure that, I just say, I appreciate him. I can assure Councilman Bradford that he's no slumlord, and he has some. Before you, I'm just, go ahead now. And he has some, he keeps his properties up, and I appreciate that, because that's what a lot of our citizens deserve. Well, most of them do deserve that, it's just, like you said, not in a financial situation what they desire to be in.
Correct, and we got to stop that from happening, and when people pass away, I mean, you can't just let a house go, and I think that's where, once again, involves staffing, but I mean, everything's public record. You can do a property search, you can see what's adjudicated after something goes into a tax sale one year. Well, go knock on the door. Are you aware the taxes haven't been sold? I mean, I just feel that if we can keep properties out of investors' hands, that don't have any skin in these neighborhoods, and keep them in the, you know, the residents' hands that live there, I think that's the key. I think that that's, fighting adjudication, I think the key too, is not letting the properties get into adjudication. Things that have been adjudicated for 20 years, rehabbing them is, you know, expensive, it takes time, and, you know, once again, but we still have to deal with those properties as well.
That's true. I met a lady who was on, she's on Milton Street, and she's in my district, and her husband paid the bills, paid the house note for 22 years, and he passed, and she just thought she should just continue to pay the note, and she got a phone call and was told that, "I own your house, and now you're paying me rent," which was three times the amount of what her house note was. So, I just appreciate you bringing it up, because that is a true fact of what's going on.
Well, and I've experienced this with the time I've spent doing this job. You also have people that take advantage of others. You'll have these companies that buy in a house in tax sale and just say, "We own the house." Well, then, the property owner doesn't know any better, and then they'll start paying rent, and you can go to eviction court, and unless someone's there to really fight it for you, the judge, if you say you own the house, they're not checking for any property. So, all I'm saying on that is, there's a lot of things, I believe, that can happen to help keep these neighborhoods, you know, where they are, not let them deteriorate any further, and it's. any further. And, and it's just, uh, informing people is, I think, a, just a major, uh, thing that needs to happen, continue to happen.
All right. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Flurk.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joshua Williams. Welcome, Mr. Williams. We'll tell you his name and address, please.
Thank you for having me. Joshua Williams, thirty-nine thirteen Elmalane, Shreveport, seven eleven oh nine.
Thanks to you as well for being here. Would you tell us a bit about the position to which you've been appointed and your background, please?
I've been recommended for appointment to the cattle Boja Port Commission, uh, which I view as being one of the greatest economic drivers of our community, so... Um, I'm a lawyer, been in practice for five years, prosecuted the DA's office, where I currently handle violent crimes and sex, sex cases.
Any questions? From my seat, the, the Port Commission is, uh, perhaps the most effective driver of economic activity in our community. How, how do you think your professionalism experiences have you, have prepared you to serve on that board?
My professional experiences, um, I can't really, I don't believe that's the vein. I believe I offer the, uh, the greatest impact. I believe it's my understanding of, or my appreciation for our community and for our city, and being able to identify opportunities within our city. Uh, I, I think that we have a lot of potential in having someone on the Port Board that understands that, um, we need to be drawing, we need to be drawing businesses to our city, as well as promoting businesses within our city, um, is a, is a plus.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Councilman Bradford?
I have a question for Mr. Williams.
Councilman Flurk? Councilwoman Flurk?
Ah, you got it easy today.
Parker, where you at?
Didn't you hear him say he worked for the DA's?
I'll deal with that. I...
He's got a way to keep her mouth shut.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Those are all the appointees, Mr. Chairman, who were present today.
Okay. And we have, is Mr. Harris in? Anyone want to speak to Mr. Harris about, uh, property standards? Anything dealing with property standards?
Mr. Harris, I, I'll just say I appreciate your taking prompt action on some dumping adjacent to Magnet High School, uh, that I called to your attention at the last council meeting. Uh, and, uh, this may be already something that property standards does, but I, I think we ought to pay particular attention to streets and neighborhoods immediately adjacent to our schools. Uh, and, and perhaps that's already a priority, but I, I hope to the extent we're making decisions about how to allocate resource, we, we give special consideration to areas near our public schools.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I just want to thank you, because you've been very helpful to me the last couple of weeks. Um, I received some notice from a constituent yesterday about tire dumping that you and the Environmental Task Force have been helpful in alleviating. But it's kind of, it seems to be an ongoing problem in several different spaces, but he was really happy that additional camber has gone up to kind of help with some of that ear, that issue in the Blue Goose area. Um, and that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
Put me in touch.
It's an ongoing problem with the tire dumping. That's something that we are trying to attack.
Oh, yeah, and thank you for this week, and letting me know at the end of the day.
Okay. All right. Councilman Flurk?
Mr. Harris, I want to thank you for addressing those six issues that I brought to your attention. Uh, I'm saddened that we still don't have an answer on the accumulation of, uh, court case in the district court that came in there the first, uh, month of my service to the city in twenty fifteen, that that, uh, case is still locked up over in district court, dead as a doornail, hadn't been moved forward. But you did your best to find out for me. And, uh, hopefully, uh, that someday, uh, before I leave here, uh, it'll, it'll be resolved. But, uh, thank you for getting the grass mowed over there.
Thank you. You have six issues?
Mr. Harris, uh, expressed my appreciation to you and your team for your efforts in the, uh, MLK, your sweet, on last Wednesday. Uh, we, we, uh, sort of followed around a couple guys and just saw some activity. Uh, I got the numbers, uh, from Mr. Robinson...
Yes.
In regards to citations. Uh, like I told them when I was speaking with them initially, that MLK is a different community. It's, 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 uh, it's a challenged community. It was, it was a parish community up until forty years ago, when it was founded in this city. And the standards was not afforded that community. So a lot of the violations, a lot of the areas that you recognize as violations, some of them are beyond their control, because they did not have the infrastructure that the city had. And I wanted the, the, the officers, the private standoff officers, to be very conscientious of just, of just, uh, not, not citing things that, uh, that was not, uh, violations in some of the people that they felt like, uh, that they was, uh, being, uh, being unfair, being treated unfair. But I thought overall, the, the, uh, this week went well, and, uh, I saw some of the, uh, trash, tires that was, debris that was accumulated, and, uh, I appreciate that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming out.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Well, Councilman Bradford, you saying you want special treatment on the Cooper Road?
Mr. Chairman, I have never gotten special treatment, and I never afford tr- to, to get special treatment. I said fair treatment, Mr. Chairman. And when I say fair treatment, I'm saying the, the, the situations that you're afforded, and I don't have those same situations or those, those same things. And I'm just saying, un- unless you was a part of that environment, you wouldn't understand.
I guess I don't understand. I mean, I know that we want to, you know, either, either we want things to be one way, the whole way, and each are different.
But, but the city is not one way, Mr. Chairman.
It's not. But we got to start somewhere. I mean, we can't keep on saying, "Well, because MLK was this, MLK was that," and never try to incorporate them with the same standards that everybody else has. So we have to start somewhere, is what I'm saying.
No, I, I, I did not criticize the, the, uh, the Mr. Harris. What I said was, some of the residents felt like that they wasn't, they wasn't understanding that they don't have sidewalks. They don't have, they don't have, uh, amenities of, 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 of the inner city that was developed within the city limits. And they, you know, and the, and the, and the plight, and the, I mean, you can go on any, in some of the areas that are still basically rural, and we can fill up twenty dump trucks with debris and trash that are just out there. I mean, and, and, and he understands that. And I'm saying, so we can't, we can't just blanket that area as a one-size-for-all area. But I, again, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate, uh, your comments, but at the same time, I think, um, we would, uh, we would just make it work, you know? And I guess my, my expressions are, are part of my disappointment that the bond proposal, which would address some of the issues that I'm referring to, uh, was defeated. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the statement. Mr. Claude, did you have anything that you wanted to...
Okay.
All right. Uh, we should have gotten out. We did get a financial report. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. And we have a filing request to speak.
Mr. Ken Craft. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, this Chairman, council members, mayor. Start out with a thanks to the jurors of the Thomas...
Mr. Craft, I've been admonished to request...
One fifty-seven Archer, again, seven eleven zero five. Thank you to the jurors for doing their civic duty in the trial of Grover Cannon for police officer Thomas Lavalley. It takes too long, but let's hope, uh, a correct sentence is given. Fifty-six years ago today, we lost President Kennedy. The thought for today in the paper by Kennedy is, "A man does what he must in spite of consequences, in spite of obstacles and dangers and pressures. This is the basis for all human morality." Just let that sink in. As, uh, Councilman Bradford said, you know, a week ago Friday, even though the mayor was unable to attend, we had the all-day budget hearings for twenty twenty. Pleased to hear most of it. The most upsetting thing I heard was from our Director of Community Development, Ms. Bonnie Moore, when I found out the ALIS report jumped to fifty-seven percent of our citizens at or below poverty. Kind of consistent with what we just heard. Whatever we can do to work against those, those horrible numbers. Uh, the, the election itself, uh, was interesting insofar as they all failed by small margins. The Proposition Three, the smallest, maybe, maybe sixty-six votes. I was studying some things, and I noticed the cattle parish commission lost a point eight-three mills, public facilities, rededication back in April twentieth seventeen by sixteen votes, came back on the mayoral primary on November sixth and got sixty-three percent. Yes, there's no magic formula, no magic bullet. I think it ultimately comes down to a matter of trust, trust in you, and you, and the police fire departments. Remind you again, I was pleased to see the sales tax came in four point four percent up over last year for last month. It, it probably will come in three and a half million at the end of this year above the budget. Please find some money, and therefore at least give these fine police officers and firefighters a, a one-time bonus, if, if, if not, uh, a two and a half percent COLA. Of course, that has to be sustained by some future funding, so that's not there. And as far as the bond, obviously, we can't have an election in March, because the deadline for the bond commission is December eleventh. That's impossible. I'm not sure we can do it in May, although that deadline of March sixteenth is possible. We just need to revisit. We need to list the streets. We talked about August thirteenth, y'all passed Resolution one hundred, and we heard we're going to get a streets list. Three months later, we voted without a streets list. That's essential. We got to go back and, and, and trim a little bit, and maybe get it down from a hundred eighty-six, a little bit less. And whenever y'all come back after it, we'll just try to do better. Thank you.
Mr. Rudolph Glass.
Rudolph Glass, seventeen thirty-five Arlington, Shreveport. First of all, I want to mention, um, the bond. Uh, you know, there was thirty-six million dollars, um, taken out of the bond for community development. Some of the issues was discussed earlier in the meeting. Uh, also, housing programs, especially for the elderly, um, jobs and other programs that would help the community. I also heard the young man talking about tourists in Shreveport, tourism. That's, with the amount of shootings that we've had in Shreveport, you have people in Boja City that don't want to come to Shreveport. So when you have it, where you have all these issues going on, people are not going to want to come to Shreveport for those various reasons. I, um, was here at last meeting, and y'all were talking about the building on Kings Highway that burned the old Long John Silver. Now, that building has not been like that for maybe about a year. But we have houses in neighborhoods that have been there for decades. It has deteriorated to the point where they're falling in, and nothing has been done. And it's not that people haven't complained. For whatever reason, it has not been taken care of. So, I'm just kind of wondering why is there so many, so much emphasis on this building and not other buildings in the community where people live every day? Also, um, you know, we, we talk about the city being broke, but we have so many different issues that would help, but nobody seems to even think about these things. You know, when I was coming up, we had different things that the, that the city took care of. Now you have a lot of things being contracted out, where people are making money, and the city's getting in nothing. Uh, you have like, um, used to have towing for the city, where you collect money for the towing as well as storage. You have, um, then when you have firms coming into the city of Shreveport, doing work, and they leave, the money goes with them. That money's never coming back to Shreveport. You also have, I know a lot of people not going to want to hear this, but you have department heads and other people work for the city that don't live in the city. They don't have a vested interest, no more than a job. And they take money out of the city. They don't pay property tax here or anything. So, it's a lot of things that could be done, but it has to be looked at. It has to be dealt with. I put it like that, because I know it's been looked at before. And when, when you go back to do the bond...
Mr. Chairman, the speaker's time has expired, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Edward Jackson.
Hello, hello, hello. Hi, my name is Edward Jackson, and I stay at one six six nine Easy Street. And I guess we're still speaking on, uh, on the building that, that my friend, uh, Baby Savage, uh, supposed to be, uh, building on. Um, I don't know the exact details, but I do know he's the person. I do know that, um, whatever he puts his mind to, he uses it to construct or better not only himself, but others around him, such as myself, helping me get into my house, helping me whether I needed help on, on getting a car, something like that. He's always been somebody that I can rely on when I need it, in good times and bad. So, um, I really didn't have much to say, but I can say that he's a good man.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Barry Austin.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Austin, is your counsel present as well?
Uh, no, sir. I was at, I actually, he gave, he provided me with the agenda, and it actually had me further down on the agenda. He asked me to text, text him when we were approaching that.
Well, uh, I, I'll just say, if you would like, your, uh, your matter is on for introduction today.
Yes, sir.
The council's not going to take any action. And so if you would prefer to wait for your lawyer to be here to make remarks on your behalf, I'd certainly welcome you to do that. It's your decision.
Yes, sir. It was my appreciation from what my lawyer told me, that, uh, it was going to be heard on the December tenth for a hearing.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding from the clerk.
Yes, sir. Uh, my lawyer also provided me with, um, a request. I have three copies to provide with all its subpoenas. It's actually, it's two, uh, two requests that he provided me...
Why don't you, uh, why don't you provide those to the clerk of counsel? Unless you want to make remarks now, which you may prefer not to, since you have counsel...
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll let your lawyer make those remarks on your behalf. Okay?
Okay.
Then provide your request to the clerk, please.
Okay.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't have a clue, Mr. Chairman, what in the world that conversation was about.
May, uh...
Was it something, they bought a new car or something? Somebody fill me in exactly what he came up to talk about.
Councilman Flurk, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We have on our agenda a motion of, from the fire chief requesting that we extend, uh, the, the period for an investigation against this firefighter. He's represented by council. There is, uh, dispute regarding whether there was an agreement to extend the investigatory period. Uh, and there is further dispute as, I think, as to whether the council has the authority to extend the period, uh, if it has already expired. And so I, I think Mr. Brainerd, who represents, uh, our firefighter, is in the best position to fill us in on that.
Yes, sir. That's great. Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who was, uh, his counsel? What...
Aaron Brainerd is his lawyer, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, is there an agenda item?
Yes, it's on for introduction, Councilman Bradford.
Now it looks like nobody read the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ricky Miley. And I apologize if I said your last name incorrectly. I believe that's...
Ricky Miles. Address Thirty-eight oh six Marlboro, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven oh nine. I'm here to discuss the like of votes or whatever happened with the bond issues. I looked at that from a serious, I guess, perspective. Either the people have spoken, you are not listening, or you are not communicating what is necessary for us to do. We have a serious problem here in Shreveport. And y'all are some of the brightest people that Shreveport have to offer. And if you can't figure that out, how you think our average person who do the seven-to-three and nine-to-five, how you think they're going to get it right? We got crime, we got all kinds, we got like a job, we got all these different issues. But we are asking you to represent us, to do and put for a proposal that's going to benefit all of us. There's no way that you have a certain amount of people in a certain area still existing in poverty unless it was by design. And if it was by design, you say you have nothing to do with it. It's by your nature to bring an end to it by any means that's necessary. Otherwise, you got to think outside of the box. You cannot continue to do what they did in nineteen sixty, seventy and eighty and ninety. There's something new that's got to be done in order to bring the people out of poverty. Begin to educate them, begin to allow the young folks to have a dream again. Most of them don't even know what a dream is now because the only thing they know is how to react because that's all they see you doing. We got crisis here and you are the brightest. That's why we elect you. That's why we trust when we push that box saying we want you to represent us, that this is what you're going to do. But when you fail to come up with a proposal that would benefit the parts of all of Shreveport, especially the parts of the poorest, not only did the bill fail, but you failed. And I just say shame on you for not doing a better job in that.
Mr. Versa Clark.
Mr. Chairman, was the clerk trying to get your attention?
I waited until after all of the people spoke.
Okay. The clerk was trying to get your attention.
I don't know about following all of this. Versa Clark, seven-six-two-six Tampa Way, Shreveport, seven-eleven oh five. I too am speaking on the new bond proposal. The old folks had an adage that said, "What goes on in the night will surely come to life, light." As you prepare to draw up a new bond proposal, make sure you have the transparency that you promised the voters during the 2018 election. If you choose to have citizen input, giving clear instructions to what that committee or community effort should be is imperative. Had they known that they could not have added that thirty-six million dollars in economic development funds, they might have chosen a different route. For instance, the total of the three propositions was one-hundred-and-eighty-six million and that sixteen-member group might have found ways to include city and parish businesses to complete the projects, especially the thirty-eight-point-seven percent of African-Americans that are living at or below the poverty level. Too many of the city's bond projects are given to outside contracts while the blight that you were to address continues. The thirty names on the master plan community advisory group are probably friends, relatives, or neighbors of yours, and their time and effort should not be taken lightly, as well as the expense to the city for putting together this master plan. You are the body that adopted this particular plan and we are just eleven short years away from investing in another plan. The real truth is, we should be completing medium-term goals with where, which were scheduled to be completed between 2016, 2020. But all indications are, we have not completed many of the short-term goals which were scheduled for the 2010 to 2015 timeframe. And why don't these bond proposals reflect the greater expectations of the master plan? There was a reason why several months ago, I read to you, "Complete the vision of this plan." Oh, yeah. About the eight industries and the twelve-thousand, twelve-hundred to twenty-four-hundred jobs that the thirty-six-million-dollar economic development proposal was to address. If private industry is still interested...
Mr. Chairman, the speaker's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your remarks. Well said, as always.
Chair, may I? Mr. Versa?
Yes.
Will you submit a copy of your entire statement to us for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Weiner.
Hello, I'm Bill Weiner. I live at number two Longley Flame, seven-eleven oh six. I'm here to talk about really three items and I'll try to be as brief and just a summary. And if you want to talk about them later in more detail, I'll be happy to meet with any of you, anywhere, anytime. I'm going to start with the bottom one, which is Old Galilee Baptist Church. I have been involved in this except from when Hazel Beard tried to tear it down. And now you all have approached trying to fix it up. It has the potential to be a national landmark. The way it's done, I know about it because I was chairman of the board at the Department of Interior that gets it done, and I know what you've got to do to get it through. And what is missing, we need to get some photographs taken of the interior and a little of the outside before the remodeling begins because they need that when they're putting together their proposal to put it as a national landmark. And there's no funding for that. It would cost, oh, I have it written down here. I think it's two-hundred, excuse me, two-thousand-four-hundred dollars, two-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And it needs to be done very soon to get this documentation that would be part of the application to become a national landmark. We have one national landmark in Shreveport. That's McNeil Street Pumping Station. And that was the one that got it on and got it through and the city had nothing to do with it. The mayor just had to sign it. And so the reason it is so important, Galilee is the most significant historical, cultural building in Shreveport. It's there where half of our population learned how to peacefully integrate. They held classes and it worked. The next thing I want to talk about is Fire Station Number Eight, which I talked to you before, which you traded to Willis Knighton so that you could build a new fire station. That building is a national registered property. It was not fully disclosed and in the proposal on the trade to make it financially equal, it was proposed to be torn down. I think it was a mistake. I don't think you had sufficient information to make informed decisions. And with the bond issue failing, there's no money to build a new one probably. So I would ask you to reconsider this whole thing and try to fix it up. And the future bond issues must have an element for maintenance. So many of these problems that you've been facing and I've been facing have been because of deferred maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Weiner, very much. Mr. Lester Smith.
Mr. Weiner, we have a copy of your statement, too. We all have it.
Yeah, that was just my notes to me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Lester Smith, forty-one forty-eight Thiel Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven oh nine. I'm here also to speak on the bond issue. But I'm speaking on a specific part of the bond issue, the thirty-six million dollars that was withdrawn from the bond issue. And we're serving notice that if you're going to present another bond issue in the spring of the year or whenever you decide to present a bond issue, there has to be, there must be a part of that bond issue that deals with the lack of economic problems in the African-American community. We're asking for, and I hear this number today about the fifty-seven percent poverty level, and we constantly brag about we are the majority. We're the majority of the poor because we're not included in anything else. So I'm saying if a bond issue comes before us again and it does not have something where the economic conditions in the African-American community are better, we're not going to vote for it. Now, we are used to robes being overlaid. We're used to all the issues that were in the previous bond, but we have to fight like hell to get whatever's promised to us. And then after all the fighting, we still walk away with nothing. And it has nothing to do with this body up here. It has a whole lot to do with the people in the community because we sit back and allow the misrepresentation, the misleaders, to do as they please what we are concerned and then we gripe and fight among ourselves. I'm not coming down here for three minutes to talk or three minutes to be on camera. I'm coming down here because there's an issue in the community that's hurting the African-American community. It hurts the whole of Shreveport because when people don't have, it may be in more towns today, but it trickles to other areas. So if you're not talking about some economic empowerment with that thirty-six million, at least, at least half of that money, if not all, going to the African-American community, we're just not going to be happy. And we're tired of you all making decisions for us and not including, not even having the common courtesy to see where we stand on issues. You're inviting us to dinner, to our favorite meal, and you haven't even taken the common courtesy to ask what I like. And so we're tired and we're not going to take it anymore. So we're serving notice that, you know, you can put whatever you want to put before us. We're not going to take this anymore. You cannot continue to just put stuff and ram it down our throats as if we don't matter and say we are the majority and we're supposed to have this and we have the majority of nothing in this city. We're fighting for what we fought for in the sixties before civil rights. We're fighting for the same things. We're always up here big and give us a fair share. We don't need to ask you for a fair share. That should be a given based on the leadership. We have four black peoples on this council and look like somewhere in the interim, they would have recognized the needs in the black community because they haven't changed. And I thank you all for your time.
Mr. James Robinson.
My name is James Robinson. Address is four-three-four Chalk Talk Trail, Shreveport, Louisiana. As I stand this afternoon to listen to all the things that have been said, I came here and I moved back home in nineteen eighty-one. I was raised on the Cripple Road, Martin Luther King area. And when I moved back here, it had become part of this city. I haven't seen not much of nothing done in our area. But you've been getting the tax money from that area. And every time somebody come to say something about it, y'all seem to get upset about it, just like they did a few minutes ago. When, I don't know who was talking to you, Councilman Brackford, I don't know if that was, yeah. We ought to be, you say what you want to, but we ought to be. We've been left out for over forty years. So you can make that joke if you want to, but it ain't no joke.
It's not a joke.
No, but I'm letting you know we want to. Because y'all get what y'all want, but we don't get what we want. And let me tell you something, a lot of things, a lot of jobs that can be taken care of and helped with other people going to work and being paid a bare minimum wage. Let me tell you why. I have come back here and started work as a contractor and paid all the guys that worked for me ten dollars an hour or more and got work done. And there's something we got turned down on because you said we couldn't do it. I'm the one that put the proposal together. I know what it takes to do, but you said we couldn't do it. Said the devil when he was the city councilman. Y'all had, there was some bond money came available to help take care of the property up on the, you know, in the low-income areas. When I paid for mine, he told me that I couldn't get it done. Well, if I can't get it done, why I'm a, why I'm a add it all up and put it together and tell you I can get, I can work, fix each house and repair each house for this amount of money and you going to tell me I can't do it and you don't know nothing about it? You don't even know how to do the job, but you going to tell me that? It's wrong. Y'all know y'all wrong. That's all of y'all, all of y'all wrong. Because y'all won't stand up and do the right thing. You say one thing and you're doing nothing. Job training hands-on is the best training you can give a person. I'm telling you what I know. There are some guys that I hired that worked for me, didn't know nothing, but they know how to build a house right now because I taught them. So don't tell me that it can't be done. Y'all need to listen to what we got to say like you listen, like you, when it's time for y'all to get elected in these offices? You take time and come out to our communities and talk to us, put me in office, put me in office, and then when we put you in there, you don't do nothing. We're tired of that. And that bond issue, y'all, it's sickening. It's sickening. It's sickening. We're tired of that.
Mr. Chairman.
The next time from here on out when y'all want to do something, y'all take time out and come to us and sit down and discuss to us and tell us what you need and then we will work with you and then when we do that, don't come out here and tell us you're going to do one thing and you come down here and y'all get together and then lie about it and come back and give us a false lie about it.
All right.
We don't want to hear that.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Mr. Bev Francis.
Good afternoon. I'm Bev Francis, one-twelve East Piccon, San Antonio. I'm the attorney for SBA Structures. Pleasure to appear before you again. For over twenty-five years, I've been representing telecommunications companies and tower infrastructure builders. In addition, I've represented many applicants and appellantants on land use cases. And during this period of my career, I've never seen a situation where a council has sought to rescind its own decision, particularly in a land use case. And why is that so rare? Why is that such an odd occurrence? Well, the reason is, a rescission is an extremely harsh action. It creates massive amounts of uncertainty on your applicants, your appellantants, when they come before you either to appeal a decision as SBA did, or they come before you to request permission under an application for a special use permit. There has to be finality. After decisions and times have been spent to educate not only the community but also the council, there has to be finality. So what has happened in the last thirty days to cause a motion to be placed on the agenda to rescind your decision? I tell you what hasn't happened, and that was what was discussed openly by you and recommended to him, Bill. Apply, reapply. Meet with Mr. Clark. Meet with the consultants. Find out what you need to do to make a better application that complies, that gives you the opportunity to approve it and for them to prove the need for that. to prove the need for that tower. But I will tell you what has happened in the last thirty days. What happened two days ago is you got sued. Hemp Hill sued you in district court to ask the district court to overturn your decision. That's what's happened. They've taken that step during twenty-nine days go by, no positive movement to do the right thing and to prove the need. Let me read you a couple of the statements if you hadn't had the chance to see the petition. "The council acted arbitrarily and capriciously in denying the application." You acted arbitrarily and capriciously. "And unbelievably and painfully, in front of Mr. Clark," I read you the following. "Despite the poor handling of the application by the MPC staff and the unanimous approval by the MPC, the council arbitrarily and capriciously relied on the recommendation of the MPC staff in direct opposition to the decision of the staffs, supervisors, and employers, the MPC," and this is unbelievable, "in essence denying Hemp Hill's application because of the MPC staff's either inexperience or incompetence in handling the case." They sued you as opposed to doing the right thing and reapply. "We respectfully request that a motion to rescind your October twenty-second action not be placed on the December tenth agenda." Thank you for your time.
Mr. Francis, thank you for being here. I won't comment on the pending litigation other than to say that I have full confidence in the MPC's director and his staff, and it is disappointing to hear their good work characterized in that manner. You and I are both members of the bar and know that lawyers take a free hand in characterizing their adversaries and their opponent's actions, but I certainly very strongly disagree that the council acted arbitrarily and capriciously or that the MPC staff did other than an excellent job in attempting to resolve in a fair and impartial manner this important matter. I appreciate your calling to the council's attention, the fact that the city of Shreveport has been sued since the city council made its decision concerning this matter. That is an action that cannot be undone. That is an action that was taken in reliance upon the council's prior action. And for that reason, I think whether the motion that has been suggested is procedurally proper merits the council's careful consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. And if I may, I feel the same way as I mentioned to you all about the quality of the people and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Alvin Meester, nine oh nine Poitras, New Orleans, Louisiana. This afternoon, I'm going to address some of the procedural legal issues regarding item fourteen B, the motion and the notice of the motion to rescind. We feel that it's, this is an inappropriate procedural device. The code, the city code and the UDC are clear with the procedure on how MPC hearings and appeals are held. There's an MPC hearing. If someone wants to appeal, they appeal to the city council, and then if there's a problem, they can appeal to district court. Frankly, that's what has happened. The Hemp Hill has appealed to district court. That is what they followed. That is the procedure that is contemplated by the code, and we would recommend that that procedure be followed. Because there's a clear procedure, there is no reason to apply or to appeal to Roberts' Rules of Order. That's sort of, that's where this motion to rescind is coming from. In the, in the procedure for the city council, there's a backdoor provision that references the Roberts' Rules of Order, but that's only if the code doesn't address the procedure. We feel that the code addresses the procedure, and there's no reason to incorporate provisions from Roberts' Rules of Order. Kind of a technical argument, but we feel that it's inappropriate. There's a procedure that exists. Hemp Hill has already followed it. Also, we feel that rescinding, having a motion to rescind is bad policy. It shows a lack of respect for the prior process, and it shows a lack of respect for the express process in the code. It may be a bad precedent, not maybe, it is a bad precedent because the council has acted that this could happen over and over and over. Someone gets a few extra votes, reconsider. Someone gets a few extra votes, reconsider. When would it end? Also, we're unaware that it's ever been used in Shreveport. That should also tell us something. Specifically, the section four eleven that is being relied upon and incorporating that Roberts' Rules of Order that I, that I've mentioned before, that only deals with procedural matters, how you table something, how you ask for a previous question, those, that minutia that you probably learned when you were, when you started on the board. We feel that it doesn't apply.
Mr. Meester, I am in charge of being consistent, so I-
Understood.
I apologize to the chairman that your time has expired.
Members of the council, I want to speak at this time. We either operate by Robert Rules orders, sir, I'm through with you. You can sit down. Gentlemen, we and ladies, Madam Councilwoman Lavette Fuller, we either operate by Robert Rules order or we don't. I went to the city attorney, I followed protocol. I went to the clerk of the council. I simply made a mistake and was honest. I got confused, and that's the reason I asked to follow the procedure and Robert Rules, and it gave me some relief to correct the mistake that I made. And I was honest. I said I got confused and I voted wrong. This may pass and it may not, but in my heart, I will know that I have done the right thing to try to correct the error that I made. This gentleman here talks about Robert Rules doesn't apply. Well, what does? If I, I didn't do this on my own. I went to our very well-able city attorney. I went to the clerk of the court. I didn't dream this stuff up. I asked for a remedy to correct the mistake, the error that I made, and that's all I'm saying to you. I tried it to follow the procedure that would help me correct the error. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will say that although I've expressed an opinion concerning the motion, I certainly don't in any way fault my good friend and colleague, Councilman Fleury, for bringing this motion. I understand that he did so following consultation with the city attorney and the clerk of council, and so I appreciate his remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me also just, and the councilman, I think expressed what I was going to refer to the council clerk and attorney about, and that was the legality of the motion. Now, I want to, I want to say that this council does not fully operate under Robert Rules of Order. We honor, we operate under council rules, which is a modification of Robert Rules of Order. There's some, there's certain aspects of Robert Rules that we follow, there's some, but the council has its own rules that it has been adopted and which governs our activities. Now, and if the motion's in order, I would certainly support it, but my question that I need the council clerk and the attorney to address is that the timeframe in which this is happening, because on an ordinary, we are within the council rules, have the, have the preview to reconsider our votes in the, in the meeting in which we make those votes. Now, oftentimes, after ten days after we adjourn a vote, if it, if it's applicable, then that, that motion or that legislation prevails and goes into, and goes into, you know, goes into effect. So there are times where a motion to reconsider would not be applicable because, because it had went through the process of becoming a policy or law. So I need, I need, at the proper time, the council, I mean, the attorney to give me if this, if this action that is being proposed is, is within the preview of the gentleman's request. And I think we can, we can clarify that at that time.
Councilman Bradford, I certainly understand. I have the theory that if the glove don't fit-
You must have quit.
Must have quit. Thank you.
Anyway, I just wanted to be clear that, that we're not mingling law. Okay? But thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions to speak.
All right. There are no items on the considered agenda for introduction to be adopted. Mr. Thompson, can we start with the regular agenda legislation?
Mr. Chairman, the first item is Resolution one thirty-two. It was postponed, it has been postponed until December the tenth. There is no reason to take any action on that. One thirty-seven, a man's resolution number twenty of twenty thirteen, which was adopted to amend the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Bossier City, Parish of Caddo, Parish of Bossier, the Shreveport-Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau relative to the Shreveport-Bossier Sports Commission.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Resolution one thirty-nine authorizes a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in districts A, F, and G and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with six, Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-eight authorizes a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in districts A, District A, and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Green. No discussion, please vote. Number one forty, passes with six. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-one authorizes the mayor to accept a monetary donation of fifteen thousand dollars from the Shreveport Gardens Study Club to the city to be utilized by the Shreveport Parks and Recreation Department for the governmental plaza beautification project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. Passed with six. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-two authorizes the mayor to execute an act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Lucian Fields Estates Homeowners Association, acting herein through Lee Foster for lots, one thousand two, Lucian Field Estates, Phase One, Unit Eight.
So moved. Moved by Councilman Green.
And second.
Second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Number one forty-two, passed with six. Mr. Thompson.
One forty-three authorizes the mayor to accept an in-kind donation worth seventeen thousand two hundred dollars in value from the E.L.A. Group Inc. to the city of Shreveport to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. Number one forty-three, passed with six. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-four authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Opera.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. One forty-four, passed with six. Mr. Thompson.
One forty-five authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Symphony.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Passed with six. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-six authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Metropolitan Ballet.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. One forty-six, passes with six. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one forty-seven authorizes the employment of legal counsel to represent the city's personnel board.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, question.
Councilman Bradford.
The, the activity of this, of this legislation limits this council to just this particular work only? Is that correct?
Personnel board.
Yeah, is he only, is he only being, being retained to deal with this particular activity within the personnel board and not to exceed beyond that responsibility? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I mean, this one is specific for his appointment to work for the personnel board to provide legal counsel for them. He also serves as co-bond counsel, if that's what you mean. That does not stop him from doing that. This is just in regard to his fee and how he is paid as the attorney on behalf of the city for the personnel board.
Are those, are those rates the same? You don't know?
The rate is the same. Yeah, the rate is the same. The only difference is that we're essentially putting a cap on what his monthly billing could be. And I believe I just noted in our bond meetings that the legal department is moving to do that for all of our attorneys who work for boards and commissions so that we can control monthly billing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel, okay, Councilman Feister, I'm sorry.
Ms. Carroll, so just, I understand in the record is clear, the lawyer, which is the subject of this legislation, is already doing the work.
That's correct.
And the rate is not changing.
Correct.
And the only change we're making is, is that we apparently have an agreement with the lawyer that he will not charge more than eighteen hundred dollars a month for this work.
Right.
Absent some extraordinary circumstance that you-
Correct, and without getting direct permission from me.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six. Mr. Thompson.
The next is Resolution one forty-eight. It authorizes the employment of special legal counsel to provide legal advice, counsel and representation. There is an amendment, number one. I don't know if the city attorney wants to explain.
I do. Chairman, may I?
Yes, city attorney, Carol, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, when we previously submitted this, we neglected to also include Ms. Joyce Matthews as one of the partners in council representing the city with regard to environmental issues, specifically the consent decree projects. If you recall, we had an executive session some months ago, and she was there. She is not new to the team. She and Mr. Hardy, I believe I told you guys, worked together for several years. This resolution is just to, this amendment, I'm sorry, is to specifically name her in that resolution, and also it increases their fee by twenty-five dollars to the AG rate for governmental work.
So moved. Go on, then, ma'am. Second.
Second, Mr..
They're moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six. Mr. Thompson.
The motion-
The order is amended.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no other discussion, please vote. So moved as amended, I'm sorry. And that also carries with six. Mr. Thompson. And that also carries with six, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, we're now, we're, uh, the next is Resolution 156. It's a resolution concerning the size and placement of the historical, uh, markers installed when a portion of a street is dedicated in honor of a distinguished citizen.
So moved.
Second. They're moved by Councilman Green and second by the Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote.
I do, I do, we need to ask the question.
Councilman Bradford?
I saw a replica of that, of that new proposed marker, but the wording that's on it is reduced. Do that, if, if, for instance, say this street is dedicated in honor of John Doe, would that go, would that, where would that be placed? On the sign that, that exists with the name of the street? That is, okay. All right, I'm clear.
That's fine.
This, this sign, uh, has been used out in Councilman Flurry's district, and, uh, I think it's more appealing than the other signs that have been used. Uh, if anybody gets a chance, you can...
Appealing, appealing. Let me, let me, let me process that word.
Chairman.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I'll, I'll say, um, that Pastor Hudson at Paradise Baptist Church also showed me one of these and suggested it would be a nice, a nice way for us to move forward with that.
Appealing, hmm, more appealing. Very fluid.
It's fluid.
Fluid.
If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Uh, we're now...
Carries with six, Mr. Thompson, sorry.
We're now in the introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to December the 10th. 149 authorizes the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Caddo Parish Coroner's Office for two decommissioned stretchers and otherwise provided with respect there Resolution 151 requests the city council to extend the time to complete the investigation of a Shreveport Fire Department employee in accordance with L.A.R.S. 32:2186. Resolution 152...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
You want to speak now on 151?
I sure would.
Okay.
Oh, I asked the city attorney, are we, and do we have authority to address this?
I'm sorry.
Do we have authority to address this on 151? Are, are we not out of our, as Willie would say, our preview?
Um, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, we, um, by statute, uh, it does say that it goes to the governing body. Um, I can prepare a memo on this and send it to the council before it passes on the 10th.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Miss, uh, well, Ms. Krill, as a follow on the Councilman Flurry's question, I, uh, I understand that there was a discussion between, uh, the fire chief and the firefighter about a potential extension of the investigatory period, and that discussion occurred before the 60 days, uh, provided by statute, had run. Uh, I get the one question around this situation is, was there in fact an agreement to extend the investigatory period? And, and I, Councilman Flurry, I think, is asking...
Yes.
Uh, even if we have authority under the statute to extend an investigatory period that has not yet expired, do we have authority to assess whether there was in fact an agreement between the firefighter and the fire chief to extend the investigation? And if, if the answer to that question is no, and the time period for the investigation consequently has already expired, the further question is, do we have authority to revive the investigation, uh, if there was not an effective agreement to extend? And if there was an effective agreement to extend, you don't need extension from us. That's, that's my...
That's, that's...
Is that what I meant?
Yes, okay. Mr. Chairman, also in this regard, when Mr. Barry Austin Toll appeared before the council after his, uh, remarks, he presented a document, uh, to the clerk's, clerk of council's office, and the document appears to be a subpoena for the mayor to produce certain records as it relates to this, uh, matter, and also a subpoena ordering the Sergeant Kelvin Goodwin to appear, uh, at our next council meeting on December the 10th to testify. Uh, for the record, I'm handing this over to the city attorney so that she can, uh, handle, uh, those matters and respond in any way that would be appropriate.
Received, thank you.
We're now, uh, Resolution 152 authorizes the mayor to accept an in-kind donation worth $19,250 in value from the, uh, U.V.H. Foundation. Uh, 153 authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Theater of the Performing Arts. Resolution 154 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carl Riggs and Ingram, LLC, for the purpose of an external audit of the city for fiscal year, January the 1st, 2019, through December the 31st, 2019. Resolution 155 authorizes a pipeline and roadway right-of-way and servitude agreement for the purpose of allowing Crosslake Gathering, LLC, to use the surface of the land to develop the oil, gas, and other liquid and gaseous hypercarbons in, under, and which may be produced from the land and other land in the vicinity thereof, city-owned property described as a portion of Section 5 Township 17 North, Range 15 West, lying below the 172-foot contour line of Crosslake, located in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, with geographic number 171505-000-0008-00. And authorize the mayor to execute said roadway right-of-way and servitude agreement with Crosslake Gatherings, LLC.
Move for introduction.
Okay, I, I got, um, I, I got three people up to speak, and I'm asking Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Flurry, would they yield to the C.I.O.?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Um, actually, I can wait. I have a request when it comes to the introduction of ordinances.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, concerning Resolution 155, there's no proposed resolution attached to that on the agenda. I understand it's being introduced by title, presumably.
Uh, no, uh, do you know if, if you refresh, I think you'll find it.
Well, I, I, I've not had an opportunity to review it, and if, is this a proposal to put a pipeline under Crosslake or water supply? Is that what this is? Could somebody, could somebody just, just tell me about what this is?
Move away on drill.
That makes me a little nervous, Councilman Flurry. That's why, that's why I gave my drink and water.
Me too.
Yes, sir, Councilman Nicholson, that's what it is, and I, I said the same thing, uh, yesterday when I heard about it. And, uh, we don't quite have all the information we need on it right now. Uh, there's a little confusion about what should be submitted. We don't have all the information that needs to be submitted, but it is a pipeline. It's proposed to be a gas pipeline, not, not a liquid or petroleum.
I don't want gas in my water, either, either.
I understand. So, so we're meeting with the group next week. Uh, we're all sent down to give more details about this pipeline.
Have, have we got any other gas or oil pipelines under Crosslake that we...
There are.
Many?
I don't know many.
I, well, I, I just urge, urge the council caution about who we give the, the right to put a gas pipeline under our city's water supply. I think we need to take great care of that.
I know it's not up until, I'm not jumping in front of you, I know it's not up until the 10th, but do you suggest we postpone until after your conversation?
I, I don't think so. I think we're gonna meet with them next week and have all, all the information.
Introduction.
Introduction.
All right. So, thank you. Councilman Flurry?
Now, you ask, Mr. Chairman, you ask what I... So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I, I mean, certainly the caution that Councilman Nicholson afforded us has to be, has to take priority. I would, I would like to know, I mean, it, it, it does not concern me as much that it's not oil. I mean, we don't want all, all going into the water supply as well as, as well as, uh, nitric gas, but at the same time, uh, Mr. Furlong, in, in, in this interim, let us know what pipelines are... on, on the, the, our, our, our water supply. What, how many, how, what do they represent? And, 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 uh, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll do some more research to see in regards to, uh, to nitric gas, what's the, what's the risk? So, we, we got time, but I think the introduction is good, as well as the, the Resolution 151. Uh, I think, I think if we don't see where that, uh, gives us any, any, uh, any standing, we need to, we need to, uh, remove that at, at the same time, if that's, if that's the situation.
Okay. I agree. But, all right. Ms. Jones?
Um, yes, um, before we get to introduction of ordinances, um, under that section, the administration is requesting that ordinances number 180 through 185 be withdrawn.
All right, those have not been introduced, and, uh, there's no objection, they will be withdrawn.
180 through 85.
Through 185.
Okay. All right. Now, I need a motion to introduce those resolutions, just...
No.
The council clerk is gonna read those that will be introduced, and he won't read those that will not be introduced.
Unless there's an objection, they'll be withdrawn.
No, I'm talking about the motion and second for the introduction of resolutions. We never did Bradford and Green. Okay. I, I just didn't hear.
Oh, the first one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A and G.
Uh, we're now in the introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 172, amends the 2019 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 173 amends the 2019 airport enterprise fund budget. Ordinance 174 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 175 amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 176 amends the 2019 grant special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 177 amends the 2019 community development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 178 amends the 2019 downtown and entertainment economic development area special revenue fund budget. Uh, ordinance 176 amends the 2019 river fund development special revenue budget. Ordinances 180 through 185 have been withdrawn. We now under 186 that amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code. Ordinance 187 amends various articles and sections of the Code, Unified Development Code. Ordinance 188 amends the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport by rezoning properties located on northwest side of Pickett Street, approximately 175 feet southeast of Fairfield Avenue, from R dash UC Urban Core Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Those are the, all of the...
Move for introduction, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And the ones that administration withdrew would not be moved forward.
Uh, we're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 166 amends the general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized herein.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilman, I'm sorry. I can't wait.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All of these items, ordinance, uh, 166 through 171, uh, cannot be adopted today because it has not been two weeks between the time that they were...
Y'all getting ahead of yourself over there.
Uh, no, no, we weren't. Uh, she got me straight.
Oh, okay. You're a winner. Getting ahead of yourself in abbreviated council session.
Is a motion to postpone to the next meeting necessary or in order?
I think so, all of these ordinances.
All right, so moved.
Flurry, that's A and F over there with that.
All right.
Uh, motion, uh, can we make a motion to postpone ordinance 166, 167, 168, 169, 170, and 171?
It's been moved by Councilman Green, second by the Chair. Please vote.
Fisher definitely cleared.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we would, uh, we're now to table legislation and a motion to remove the 2020 budget ordinances from the table so that they can be adopted at the next meeting would be in order.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with six, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, there are no appeals, uh, to be taken today. Uh, we're now under reports from officers, boards, and committees.
All right. Are there any reports from officers, boards?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would state that the, uh, and I think you all have a notification that the Smart Emergency Business Task Force will be meeting Monday, uh, at 2 a.m., at 2, 2 p.m. here. Only Councilwoman will be here at 2 a.m., but, but, uh, we'll be meeting. Mr. Chairman, let me just say this about, about, uh, that, and, and about the general climate that we are experiencing right now. Uh, and I appreciate a lot of the comments that was made here today. Citizens, this is their house, they have, they have the right to come into these chambers and express whatever they need to express. But it is sometimes, uh, I guess, and we hear it, but it's disingenuous when we get claims that it's so, the information is so mis, 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 misrepresented. Uh, I don't know how we can avoid our citizens, uh, coming and not understanding the total, uh, issues that, that, that comes to making, uh, the city what it is and how we, how we respond to that. Uh, for instance, I, 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 I had to, and it was almost like in my district, in, in promoting the bond proposal, which would have benefited greatly, but, uh, a lot of misguided information was, was out there in the public. But I tried to, I tried to get them to understand that the reason that the M.L.K. committee specifically was in the same condition it is that it was 20 years ago, and some, some instances, 40 years ago, is because there was nothing in the budget for, I mean, in the bond proposal that would have addressed the capital improvements that they were desiring. If it's not, if it's not in the bond proposal, it doesn't, it doesn't get addressed. Yet they was blaming administration after administration for what had not happened, and it did not happen because, for whatever reason, it was not a part of the last, I know two bond proposals when it, when it, when it came to capital improvements. And, and rejection of their desire to say, I'm not gonna vote for this, it was almost akin to, I don't wanna hear the facts, my mind is already made up. And once again, we, we are in the same quokmire because as time moves on, we're not, if it's, if the streets are bad, if the drainage is bad, if the conditions of our city is bad, uh, it's gonna be bad for a long time because we, because of our, our rejection of the previous bond proposal. And so it is with economic development. This council is not responsible for losing 20,000 blue collar jobs over the last 20 years. We lost General Motors, we lost your electric Lucian technology, we lost Goog battery, we have lost, if I counted them up, over 20,000 blue collar jobs. We, we can't, we can't use legislation to hire 20,000 people. We have to create a city, a climate in this city that would, that would, that would make it appealing for business development to come. And that's why I was talking to the chief and assistant chief and the deputy chief, is that the crime element and some other plight and, 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 and issues has to be, has to be cultivated so that we can plant great things for this city for the future. It don't happen by happenstance, it gotta happen by us creating those opportunities to make job development. So the, so the proposition, not the proposition, but the, but the, but the, but the, meaning that I'm holding for the Gateway Consortium Group in regards to Cross Bayou Project. They, they came before, we had, in the last three years, for the new council members, we had two, uh, presentations regarding the Cross Bayou area. Mayor Tyler had some representatives come forward, I think it was out of Alabama, I think.
Birmingham.
Yeah, but they made, they made a very aggressive pitch for that, use of that property. They, they had in it a, 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 a sports... They, they had in it a, 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 a sports, uh, initiative. But the, but that problem was, and the council rejected that idea because, uh, they wanted thirty billion dollars of funds that we, that we couldn't find. Uh, but, but, but the problem is throughout, throughout what we experience, and I don't know if you guys, I'm experiencing, is that regardless of what we bring forward to be considered before this city, there, there is chitter chatter starts immediately on why we shouldn't do something. We can't do that, we shouldn't do that, it's, it's a con job, it's a this job, it's a that job. And, and I said over and over again, in Shreveport, Louisiana, in twenty, on this day of twenty nineteen, there's not one crane, not one crane that's putting up a capital project in the city of Memphis, Shreveport, not one. You go, you go to some other cities our size, you got cranes everywhere, billing skyscrapers. But the economic condition of our city right now is, is not, is not there. So what do we do? We can't, we, we gotta be open-minded, we got to, we got to hear and consider. I'm not, I'm not, I have made no deals with nobody about anything. I say, listen, eighteen months ago, this group came before this council, the minutes were reflected, and I, and I'm trusting Jack that you would make sure that all council members get a copy of those minutes, where they made a proposal to this city, and this council, the previous council said, listen, we've heard this before, okay? Now you go out and you put together a, a, a presentation that would leave no questions unanswered. So we entered into a non-binding, uh, memorandum of understanding so that they would have leverage when they went back to solicit and seek the, 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 the investment and the, in the participation that, that we would wanna consider if we're going to enter into a binding agreement. And they said they prepared to do that, and I want, I want you to come hear them, okay? And I see what they have to say. Let it, let it, it got to go through scrutiny, it's gotta be scrutinized, it gotta go through all the aspects of what this government would desire because again, we are gonna be responsible for entering into anything. What I'm saying again, if we're not comfortable with it, we don't, we don't tell this group the same thing we told the group that Mayor Tyler about for, thank you, but no thank you. We don't see, we don't see all the answers that we need to make this type of, uh, commitment. So, so I'm just saying, I, I think we owe it to ourselves not to say no to everything, not to reject everything that may come to us. Sometimes it could be disguised as something one way, but it could be real. I, I remember, I remember the guy who founded McDonald's into some other business development where he voted for many times before it was accepted to the public. We gotta have some economic development. We, we need jobs, we need, we need jobs. And, and at the same time, yesterday, I got a group out of Allendale promoting that we do not need I forty-nine through the city, a eight hundred million dollar project that would stimulate the economy of Shreveport, saying, we don't want that. We don't want that. When NLCO, the, the highway department, our legislators have, 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 have put through appropriations of hundred million dollars that's right now levied toward this project and with the, our, our US senators who's saying, and we met with them, who's saying, we feel like through the, through the, through the national highway bill, we, we should be able to get the remaining five or six hundred million to make this happen. The viral melan studies has been done, most of the, most of the preliminary work has been done, but yet we got people in Shreveport saying, we do not want a eight hundred million dollar stimulus, we do not want a projected billion dollar project to our city that would almost refashion our city because y'all do know now we are the second largest city in Louisiana after what happened in Baton Rouge back in October. And some claims even now, you saw them, that all we, all we setting ourselves up for a split in this, in Shreveport ten years from now where the Southern Loop area would be petitioning themselves to this annex. We don't have time no more for shucking and jiving. You heard the cries from our citizens today. This council gotta have some courage. Seventy, I'm sorry, fifty-seven percent of the citizens of Shreveport live on or below the poverty level. The twenty eighteen House report. That's unbelievable. And all we can make a difference in addressing that horrible statistic is that we got to create economic for our citizens. If you're available, council members as well as the public, let's just, let's get information that coming out on next Monday at two PM, and let's hear a, a presentation that we can vet, and if this council sees the opportunity, we'll, we'll act appropriately. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bradford, uh, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to recognize Ms. Gloria Lee from District Health, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Ms. Lee, glad to have you here. Councilman Nicholson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if this is a convenient time, I'd like to ask Chief Raymond to, uh, address the council briefly regarding the, the spate of shootings that we've had and the police department's plan for addressing, uh, that crime wave. And I will say as he walks up that I appreciated Councilman Bradford's remark earlier in this meeting that part of good policing is, is aggressive policing. Community-oriented policing is important for establishing relationships with law-abiding citizens, but there is an element of this community and every community that is not law-abiding, that does not have the best interest of other citizens of this community at heart, and, and so, uh, I appreciate that we all recognize that as to those hardened criminals, people who do things like murder a two-year-old, which happened recently, or shoot a six-year-old, those people, uh, those people need to be dealt with decisively and aggressively, and they need to be sent to prison. So, uh, Chief Raymond, if you could please give us your thoughts.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilman Nicholson, and the mayor and other council members. I prepared some information, and I wanna, I wanna try to share what we've initiated in the, within the last seventy-two hours, um, some of the plans going forward to address the rashes shootings we've had since Friday of last week, but I wanna do that without sharing too much information that would affect our investigative and proactive efforts. So, uh, hope you understand that. Uh, first thing we've done is we've, uh, our street level interdiction unit is mainly a uniformed unit in that they are proactively policing the area. They also, um, work investigative, small investigations, large, smaller scale investigations. We have them assigned to street duties where they are proactively enforcing suspicious vehicles, stopping suspicious persons, utilizing the methods allowed by law to try, specifically those areas where we've seen these rashes shootings, um, to try to decrease criminal activity and get violent offenders and get illegal weapons off the street. They're doing that somewhat in unison with our investigative division as investigators develop suspects, both from the shootings that have occurred as well as who we believe to be potential suspects for shoot, future shootings based on their ties to family members and friends, to try to target some of those people, again, to prevent them from becoming either suspects or victims of future shootings. We've also created a special operation several nights a week based on those crime stats where you have overtime paid, uniformed officers, so visible presence, doing the same thing that street level unit is doing, stopping suspicious people, suspicious persons, and just, uh, deterring crime. Um, robbery intervention detail that has been ongoing since Halloween, uh, that's addressing a specific element of violent crime, but certainly they're on these streets, and those are the same investigators that typically work homicide and robbery investigations. As a matter of fact, they were working the detail, uh, in the shooting in Cherokee Park went out, uh, two days ago, and were able to immediately respond and address, and address that problem. They're, that's plainclothes officers primarily on the street in what we may consider undercover capacity, so not in marked units, but that does provide a beneficial element when we're talking about some of these violent crimes. Um, we've also got some cohesion, we're working with some of our law enforcement partners such as probation and parole, state police, Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office, um, to address particular criminals that we know are committing some of these crimes, we believe are committing some of these crimes, and again, if they're violating probation and parole, we're gonna, uh, we've got some commitments from them to revoke their parole or probation, whichever it may be, to try to, again, get those individuals off the streets, as well as some increased presence from uniformed state police and Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office. We recently, uh, added the state police to our major notification, I know that council members are a part of that group, so that when we have crimes occur in the city, such as a shooting or a major incident like a robbery, that information will be immediately dispatched to the troopers that are working our area. I talked to Captain Cordell Williams a couple of times over the last week, and, uh, he's told me about the increase of troopers that they've had in our area, and that it would be beneficial for them to find out about those incidents as soon as they occur, and I agree, so we're taking means to include more of his investigative divisions in getting those major notifications so they can be of assistance. Uh, Councilman Nicholson also asked me about the violent crime units and task forces we're a part of. We have two, excuse me, we have one officer assigned to the US Marshal Servants Violent Offender Task Force, which are primarily utilized, we have a warrant for a suspect, they often are called to take that person into custody. We have two agents, uh, two officers assigned, rather, to the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force, and again, they focus their efforts on violent crimes and drug organizations which you may refer to as a gang. Uh, we have one, uh, agent assigned to the Drug Enforcement Administration. Um, as a matter of fact, last night or the night before my days run together, they were instrumental in assisting the street level and addiction unit. We got two kilo- kilograms of cocaine off the streets of Shreveport, two kilograms, kilograms of cocaine is a large amount of narcotics for this area, and, and made an arrest as well. Uh, we have two agents assigned to the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, they've been instrumental in the Project Safe Neighborhoods grant that the US Attorney Offices assist us with, in which cases in which we would, uh, we'd get stiffer sentences in the federal jurisdiction versus state jurisdiction. The Project Safe Neighborhoods grant is used to, uh, trial those, those, those suspects federally, uh, where they get sentenced to crimes and don't have the benefit of probation and parole, so it's an asset to us to get those people off the street. And then we also have an officer assigned to the Homeland Security Investigations, which was part of that group where we seized over a million dollars in marijuana the other day. They also assist in any investigation that crosses state line and primarily focus their efforts on violent criminals. Um, Councilman Nicholson asked me about any needs that we might have as a police department, and I'm just gonna kind of briefly name a few. One is certainly pay raises, um, and the benefit of pay raises that we keep some of our well-trained veteran officers. We have lost, uh, I wish I had the exact number with me. Um, historically, we lose about three officers a month, thirty-six a year, due to resignations, retirements, and terminations. This year, we've already lost close to forty, and the year's not over, I know of several pending retirements at the end of the year. But a, a large portion of those have not been resignations or terminations, excuse me, have not been retirements or terminations, they've been officers resigning to go to other local agencies where they feel that they have better benefit packages. So anything we can do to compete by keeping those trained officers here and also to try to draw officers from some of those other agencies to the Shreveport Police Department in the form of lateral transfers would be very beneficial. Also, money for vehicles, which I discussed last week at the council review sessions, we're in dire need for new police vehicles to replace some of our aging fleet, that would save money in maintenance costs, that would also prevent so many vehicles being down for, for preventive maintenance. Ideally, I'd like to improve or increase the size of our, um, at-home storage units or take-home vehicles so we actually have more vehicles in the neighborhoods being driven by officers that live in the city of Shreveport, that's gonna help aid in that crime deterrent effect. We also are encouraging officers to be in those vehicles and prepared to respond to crimes even if they aren't on duty. Um, and then the, the third thing I would discuss, and I actually have a group here, Chief Mitchell's, uh, had a lot of conversation about this, we have a couple detectives from our violent crimes unit and white collar crimes task force. Uh, we, we would like to start a digital forensics lab and utilize personnel already within our investigative division to run that unit. So much of our, so many of our crimes these days are being solved using cell phones, computers, and digital evidence. We don't have those assets, uh, on the Shreveport Police Department, so we generally have to, um, go to other agencies and borrow, uh, their equipment, their software, and we would like to purchase some of that equipment for the Shreveport Police Department, albeit with the largest agency in northwest Louisiana, and we utilize that equipment more than the other agencies. So those are ways in which the, um, the council could, could, uh, help to move funding around, or we have these specific requests for funding that they could assist in, uh, you know, decreasing the crime. And then the final thing I'd like to say is that the police officers, all our officers are doing a really good job. And again, I don't wanna talk about crime going down, I don't wanna talk about stats, but I will say that we have got to have more support from the community. If Bob wants to go kill Joe and police officers don't know that Bob wants to kill Joe, Bob's gonna leave his house, find a gun, and go shoot at Joe before we know about it. And the only way to prevent that is for a family member, for a friend, for someone that saw a Facebook post, to call the police and say, hey, Bob's mad at Joe, he's got a gun, this is where we believe Joe is, we need to stop him. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't benefit our violent crime rate even after the fact. Uh, to solve that crime, we need to prevent that crime, and that's gonna take community involvement. There are very, very few violent crimes that there's not someone else that knows it's going to occur, or at least would have a pretty good idea that, that we're heading in that direction. And it's incumbent upon us as citizens to make sure that information gets to the police department if you're not able to stop it, you know, within your own, um, circle of friends.
Uh, Chief, thank you for that report. Nobody has got a tougher or more important job than you and your officers that keep this city safe every day. Uh, on behalf of the council, I, I thank every one of your officers, uh, I in particular extend thanks to the officers who are involved in the most dangerous work that the Shreveport Police Department does, including the street level interdiction unit, the robbery unit, uh, the officers who are involved in the various federal task forces. That is, uh, that is dangerous work, and those men, uh, and women are literally risking their lives when they go on duty to do things like execute warrants against violent criminals. So, uh, the, the events of the past ten days or so are really a, a, a reminder of how important the work of those men and women is. I will be proposing a series of amendments to the proposed budget that will devote additional resources to the Shreveport Police Department. Uh, we can delay and put off a lot of things. Uh, the city will, uh, will not grind to a halt if we don't have new playground equipment, uh, or if we don't repave the street that's not quite as, uh, in good a shape as we wish it would. But if we don't take care of our police officers, we don't pay them fairly, if we don't do things like provide them digital forensic software so that they can do their job and solve crime in twenty nineteen, uh, that will have immediate negative and dangerous consequences of this community. And, and so I, I hope that my colleagues will join me in doing everything we can with the constraint of our budget to support the Shreveport Police Department and Chief Raymond. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All right. Chief, we got, uh, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman, were you saying we can delay the funds for night street and get to?
Well, not that, Councilman Green, no, you, no. I was talking about, I was talking about somebody else's district.
Uh, of course, Chief, thank y'all for all the work that you're doing, but I got a lot of calls on yesterday evening about a terrible accident was at, uh, St. Vincent in eighty-four. Do you know if we had any fatalities there, or anybody seriously injured? Uh, I, I got a lot of calls.
We did not have any fatalities, I can't speak to injuries, the, the most recent traffic fatality was the one on MLK, um, Monday night, I believe.
Okay. Is any way, you could?
I can certainly get some information to you as far as exactly what the injuries were, yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Chief.
All right, Councilman Bradford. How you doing, Chief?
Well, sir.
Chief, let me first thank you for your personal presence, uh, in my district on last Thursday. Uh, I think your presence- I think your presence made a difference in the attitude that they left there with. I mean, I thought you was very helpful in giving them some directions on how they could respond to that shooting. Are you aware, and I got a couple questions about, but are you aware, have you heard that the young man that got killed, the victim, were you aware that his girlfriend worked at the store? Were you aware of that?
I was.
You was aware, okay. I just wanted, okay, because again, the challenges that we had at that meeting, and we, we keep having, and I think it's been alluded to throughout the day, there was at least five witnesses to that incident, and yet, nobody told you that thing, right? Nobody told you nothing?
Nobody told us what we believed to be the truth.
Okay, what you believe to be true. And I'm saying again, and we expressed it to the community as well, that we can't effectively police and protect a community if people sees things or know things and won't tell the police things, that's, I don't know how, I don't know how we expect to get that done.
Well, and you know, another valid point is, well, I guess it's not another point, but the community is overly concerned, or very concerned about violent crimes, as they should be, but really, at this point, a lot of these problems are a community problem because we don't get the support that we need in order to solve some of these crimes. When you have witnesses to crimes that don't come forward, that's detrimental to the police department. Even if we have other evidence, it's very difficult to get a conviction if we've got people on scene that can't corroborate the evidence that we were able to ascertain through our investigative techniques. You've really got to have that element of people talking to the police department and willing to come forward and state what they saw.
Yeah. So, my last thing before I get to a question that I think Councilman Nicholson would want to respond to as well. There's no respect of crime in Shreveport, okay? The criminal element was two doors away from my house on Friday, okay? I don't know if you're familiar with that, that there was an incident on Greenwood Road and Curtis Lane that led to my neighbor's house, and I don't even know what happened, I really don't, but I just wanted to, everybody to know that there's no respect for neighborhoods, there's no respect for personalities, in a violent society, crime breeds crime, that's why we need policing, that's why we need residential and citizens to help. Now, my question is this. What do, what do living within your means mean to you in your household? Do you live within your means?
We do.
Now, you articulated a list of needs that you feel would be worthy of, I mean, resources that's worthy of your department, I agree. The budget hearings reveal and expose a lot of our weaknesses, a lot of our needs, and a lot of the needs, again, and my frustration is still yet, that the BUN proposal would have, would have taken us a long way down the road, now we trying to repurpose some funds to get to what we need to do. And I'm going to be open to Councilman Nicholson's proposals, amendments, because I think we need to do that, but at the same time, I'm very cautious that we live within our means. If we can't afford cars, we just can't afford cars, we have to make, you know, put a, you know, put a gasket on and keep driving, you know, we can't, we can't go out and obligate ourselves at a level beyond what we have the ability to do at this time. You agree with that?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I'm going to just throw this in, you know, through that, through those two days of budget hearings, you know what disturbed me the most? It wasn't, it wasn't your presentation, even though your presentation was an excellent presentation, but what disturbed me the most was Patrick Farrow's presentation, Patrick Farrow's presentation, in saying that we cannot recruit quality engineers to this city, and that some of our major projects could be at risk because we can't get the quality of engineers here to help supervise those projects, that's dangerous. That's, that's, that's dangerous, and, you know, and having, not having the capacity to bring the best that we can bring to help make this city the best we can make it is a paramount of concern to me, you know. You know, I keep using my day job, but we, 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 we put, we put, we put the resources to make us the number one what we do, but at the same time, you know, we live within our means, and we try to cross-train, we try to invest in our people by educating them in the field that we want them to be in, and not having to always go outside of our preview to get good quality people. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of parts to this that work, but more importantly, we're going to have to, regardless of the proposals or amendments that may be forthcoming, because again, we won't be able to do everything that we need to do. I mean, we can't go out and create some monies that we're going to have to take from Peter and pay Paul. Is that right, Mayor? If we're going to make some amendments, is that the way it's going to happen?
Yeah, we're truly going to keep a balanced budget, we'll definitely be stealing from Peter to...
That's what I'm saying, if we want to keep a reserve, we got a low reserve, but you proposed your executive budget that was balanced.
Absolutely.
And if there was some more money somewhere, you'd have included in your budget.
Yes, there is no more money anywhere.
So if we are to make some modifications, it's going to be taking from Peter and paying Paul, is that the way it's going to work?
Yeah, the money would have to come from another department. And I mean, not only other places going into the reserve, but you know, Councilman Nicholson, you've expressed that you don't want to go into the reserve that we've allocated, and we have a very modest reserve, you know, I'll be the first person to say that, but we also started the year off over a million dollars in the hole, so climbing out of that hole and creating that modest reserve and keeping everything else flat is very difficult, but we are there, so if we were to modify anything, then we're going to be stealing from another department to do so.
Well, we're going to do our best to do what we can do, like, I agree. If I had a choice between driving on a pothole versus having police to be available when I need them, I think I can tolerate a few more potholes. But at the same time, Mayor, let me just say this to you and the chief, I want a sort of, well, I don't want to do that, but let me just say this. You inherited, you've been in office for eleven months and some days, you've been the chief for a few months.
It was over a year.
You inherited some, some very fore-reaching situations that you didn't, that you didn't create. You didn't create it, you didn't create it, but yet, you're getting blamed for what you created. I guess it comes with the territory, okay? I am an effective manager, I made a, I made a very good living managing because I like to manage my, my issues and not create something that I don't have to create, but I also have a very serious problem with somebody blaming me for what somebody else didn't, what somebody else did. I have a real serious problem. I take responsibility, I love to be held accountable, but I can't, I can't, I can't take responsibility for something that I didn't create, and I hate that, but you, but again, you, you're the chief, you're the mayor, that comes with that. So be comfortable in knowing that we're here to support you, we're here to do what we can do, but it's, but, but, but we got to live within our means. We got, we got to live within our means. I don't know. I promise you, my wife want a new car, but she's not going to get a new car this year because we don't live within our means.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to add on to that, just real brief, that I spoke to Chief as well, and just to let him know that I support the S P D, just as, I mean, I think probably I breathe in hard, probably harder than anyone else up here I know, along with Councilman Bradford, but I just, whatever we can do, we're going to try to do what we can to support the force, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief, I think the money from Knight Street will get you over to...
That's just messy.
Design.
I feel like you're picking on me now, Councilman Green.
Yeah, we can't turn around, okay?
I did just want to add on to, earlier, I made a comment, and I still stand by the comment, because if someone in my district, and I represent a very diverse district, if someone asks me a question, I'm going to try to respond to them as best as I can. So I wasn't making a joke when I was asking about the MLK area, because people ask me, well, why, why did I have to pay a fine, or why did I have to do, you know, X, Y, Z, and keep my property up when they don't? So when they ask me that, that's my purpose for going that way with it. So to the gentleman that was out here questioning and got upset, then get out, get out your feelings, because I get in mind too. And I didn't mean nothing by it, I'm just telling like if people ask me...
We, we...
No, I'm just, I want to make sure me and you were clear, and that everybody else was clear for where I was coming from. So that's, 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 that's my issue on that.
But I, I respect your response, and that, the law.
Right.
The thing that protects me in my capacity, and protects my subordinates in their capacity, is that, that you do your job.
Right.
If you did your job, you're not in trouble. If you deter from your job without the proper authority or authorization, that's when you in trouble. Sometimes doing your job is not popular.
Right.
Sometimes doing your job calls situations that are unavoidable, but doing your job will keep you clear.
That's right.
And you will tell it to proper standards guys, okay, where you are, you being Broadmoor or Cooper Road, Allen Dale or Southern Trace, do your job, and it's all good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Farrow, when we get our job with the Cross and Guard, can we donate a portion back to the city?
Yeah, I think it'd be something like ten percent.
All right, one more, and I had, and that's, I hope the council will allow it to happen, there was Alonzo Sanders, who someone got and spoke for him, or spoke on his behalf. He thought he was being allotted the time to speak, because his, I think it was number eighty-six, and he didn't put a sheet in, but he's been there since before three o'clock, so if he could speak about his...
Objection, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate y'all for letting me speak.
State your name and your address, please.
Okay, Alonzo Sanders, ten nineteen Pickett Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh one. I'm currently building the building there, and I want it to be rezoned back commercial. When I bought it, it was commercial, and that was my intent, this was like 2016, where I filled out the pre-site application, it was something like that, if I can remember. So after being constantly put off, when I came back, it was zoned residential due to the change in the UDC, so I was told I can build a house, which was not really what I wanted, but I didn't know about the process of getting it rezoned, so I went ahead and said, agreed or whatnot, okay, let me go ahead and do this because I've already purchased it. After reading the news article about you can file to get it rezoned, that's what I did, and I went before the board, the MPC board, which the application was denied by Mr. Mauricio Rucker, Rucker, if I'm saying his name correctly, and the opposing party was Ms. Liz Swain, and according to the MPC bylaws, if a member of the board knows a person, this is eleven point two of the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section C, that they should dismiss themselves from the board for that day, if that person has any gain out of the situation, and she does because she's in operation with the catalyst for renew of Shreveport, who is planning on building homes in the area, which I've gotten a call from them, and they wanted to see my designs and my plans because they wanted to know what I was building down there. My thing is, I've heard a lot of people speak up here today about the economic enliven of Shreveport, and I'm constantly trying to do the same thing, I've heard about different budgets and stuff like that, maybe that they can get help from the city, I'm doing this out of my pocket, those things, I don't know, I'm actually spending money that I'm making off of my rental properties, trying to build a dream, not only for me, but people in Shreveport, the people of my family, generations to come, I'm going to be here for the rest of my life, I already made a plan on that, my children are going to be raised here, and I believe that this building not only needs to happen for me, but for the areas in, it's destitute, nothing's down there so far as businesses, except for San Fertitta's, which is a historic building and a restaurant, but I'm thinking I'm building something that's going to be hiring people. Futuristically speaking, I may bring more businesses into that certain area that I'm buying, but right now, I know I'm going to hire certain people to be there, and it's going to help out the area. And I have some documents that I actually wanted to submit to the course as well, just in case...
Sir, your time has expired, but will you tell me what business do you plan to open at the site?
Well, right now, I was wanting to do a used car lot. Under C three, I would be able to do some, well, I was told under C three I have to file for a special use permit, of course, but if it would please whoever is against me, I can do C three, that way it'll be enclosed and the cars won't be out, I think that was more the problem with the people who opposed me.
So if you, and I don't, I don't know what you've done at this point, but if you'll follow the process for requesting a special use permit or a rezoning, that will come to the council and the course if they're...
That's what happened, this is an MPC, this was at the MPC a couple weeks ago, and it was denied for the rezoning, and what's happened is until August of 2020, the MPC had offered an extended time for anyone to have rezoning done, to revert back to pre-unified development code zoning, and up until this point, every single one of those cases had been allowed without, well, pretty much without any questions asked to some degree, but in this case, one of the issues is that it came forward that Mr. Alonzo, what's your last name, I'm sorry?
Sanders.
Sanders, Mr. Sanders, did divulge that he wants to put in the car lot or the enclosed car dealership for used cars, and the, the adjacent neighbor, which would be the Fertitta's owners, and then other neighbors from kind of the general vicinity, don't believe that it is in, that it conforms to the other uses that are planned for that area, and Liz was speaking as a neighbor as well as as the director of the DDA. Now, what was said in the MPC meeting was that this kind of went beyond the precedent, and this is Mr. Curtis Joseph saying this, because they did know what the use was, and the MPC, I think it was like a, it was a split vote, but the majority felt that this particular use was outside of the scope of what the Unified Development Code and the master plan have in place for that area, which is for it to be a mixed-use residence and retail. Y'all still with me? Okay, so that's why they denied it, and I believe that, Mr. Sanders, are you planning on appealing? Is that why you're speaking today?
Yes, I am planning on appealing, if I can make a statement, that the only person who came from that area was Mrs. Fertitta, no one else stayed there, Liz doesn't have or own any property over there, she speaks for the downtown development, of course, but no neighbors showed up, no one who owned the property, as a matter of fact, the people in that area who own the land, I have their support, and they've already signed applications as well to get it reverted back to commercial.
There was one adjacent, not adjacent, but Thrash Construction, which is on the other side of the interstate, but it's still considered that general radius, did send a letter... but it's still considered that general radius, um, did send a letter, uh, in support of the denial.
It is on Fairfield?
It's, it's just off Fairfield, right there by Fertitta's at Pickett Street.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. You know, the rules have changed. Whenever anybody applies for rezoning, and even if the rezoning is denied, it comes before the council. And I believe it's on the agenda now as ordinance one eighty-eight, uh, which means that the council will have the opportunity to deal with this at the next meeting.
Okay, so I wanted to introduce, um, this before I leave for the record. Um, this is the paperwork showing that Liz Swain worked with Maurice Rucker and, as well as the M P C bylaws, the rules and procedures, of course, that if one of the board members knew someone, they should have recused themselves from that meeting at that point in time. And I feel that there's no mistake that Mr. Rucker was the one who motioned to deny, um, my application. So I want to submit this to the records if I can, and that'll be it until December tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
So, Councilwoman Bush, your position on this?
In addressing the, the zoning, um, I do think that it gets a little problematic to think that we've gotten inconsistency in how we're applying that. But at the same time, what I look at is the master plan and the uses that we want for that area. And I do think that this could inhibit some of that usage. Um, the other thing that was troubling was that we didn't get enough information about what the value or the enhancements could be to the area to change anyone's mind about the idea of it being a car lot. Like, the idea of having a car lot adjacent downtown doesn't sound good if it's an open thing, but if he's about to create a well-designed architectural monument that has a bunch of beautiful classic cars in it, and he can show us that, then that might change people's minds, but we haven't been presented with that.
Okay, and I, I mean, over, over the years, especially last year, when, uh, Pipes, Pipes Call Out came before this body, uh, they wanted to, uh, put a call out at the old first, was it Bank One Building on, on Seventieth at, uh, was it Canal somewhere near?
Uh huh.
The church directly across, you remember? They, they came and they really made a, uh, a concern, uh, expressions, concern expressions. But we found out now that their fears was not, was not, it was the fear be a fear, it's the fear of fear. And sometimes that could be the case. So, uh, not now, Mr. Clark, but at our next meeting, not, not on the day we're gonna adopt the budget, but the Monday meeting, I would like to get some information regarding the situation, okay? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chief.
All right. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Fuller, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Councilman Flurry has submitted to our office a document which we have placed on the agenda, and he has requested us to read for the record and the minutes said document, which reads as follows. Notice by Councilman Flurry of intent to move to rescind the previous vote of the city council on October the twenty-second, twenty nineteen, on M P C case number nineteen dash three oh one dash W F C, reflected in the minutes as of such meeting as follows. Quote, motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Green. Having considered the entire record of this appeal, the parties' written submissions and the arguments of council, be it resolved that the decision of the M P C in case number nineteen dash three oh one dash W F C is reversed, and the application of Hip Hill LLC for the special use permit to construct a telecommunications facility behind the Goodwill Industries located, location on Jump Run Drive is denied because the applicant has failed to satisfy its burden of establishing the necessity of the telecommunications facility for the reasons stated in the Center for Municipal Solutions Report dated October the sixteenth, twenty nineteen, which is attached to the motion. A motion approved by the following vote, a's, Councilman Bradford, Nicholson, Flurry, and Green. Nays, Councilman Butcher and Bowman. Out of the chamber, zero. Absent, Councilwoman Fuller. Um, and abstention, zero.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford, and to the members of the audience and ones who are viewing, that's about the telecommunications, um, uh, ordinance that we had up on October twenty-second.
Okay.
I hear the council, I hear the Councilman Green.
Councilman Green.
Mr. Chair, since, uh, since they have gone about to file a lawsuit against the city, I would suggest that until this has been done in the court, that we would not take any action. Whereas it wouldn't give either party any leverage when it comes to the court's decision. Whereas if we, uh, if, if the lawsuit, we can go back and do it, then that would give one group the opportunity to say, well, the council has rescinded, or the council has done whatever. I would ask that until this matter has been finished in the court, that we would not take any action on that. That would just be my request. Yes, sir.
The reason it was filed was to protect them, if this takes place and is reversed and we vote, then the lawsuit will go away, it will be pulled. That, that is to protect in case this doesn't get done. If you all say that we're not gonna go along and vote this down, and I don't get to revote, then the lawsuit is filed.
Well, that's what I was saying, Councilman, because, one, if we, if we uphold and give them the monopoly over the whole city to be able to, every, every week we look around, they're putting up another antenna next to some other folk antenna. I don't think that anybody else have that monopoly. I just think that we made a decision, and that decision should stand. And if they went in court, if the courts say something different, that we did what they said, because I don't feel that I act capricious, uh, I act.
But the allegation was that you were both arbitrary and capricious, and that I was as well, Councilman Green.
So, I'm from Belcher, so that says, when you say arbitrary, ignorant, that's what you say?
I don't, I don't know what all that calls, Councilman.
But anyway, I was none of what they said in their deal to the court, I'm none of that. I, I mean, I don't know law term, but we got a lawyer up here. And so, I, I think that they mischaracterized me, and, and Councilman Nicholson, I don't know if you could represent me as the filing a suit against them for saying that I said what I did not say. I voted against it because, so y'all can have it clear, so y'all can take it to the court, that I didn't feel that you all should have the monopoly over putting antennas next to other antennas throughout the city. Now, y'all tell the judge that that's what I voted on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
But Councilman Flurry didn't understand the vote. So that's what I was getting at, so.
Councilman Bradford.
And we understand, I, I mean, certainly, uh, the desire of the councilman, Mr. Councilman Flurry, if I'm correct, you, you want to reconsider the vote so that, so that we can vote again, that's your desire.
And it may not change, but at least I will be, have corrected to where I'm, I voted like that. That's all I'm asking.
No, 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 I, I agree, I'm saying that the.
My motion here may fail.
No, 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 this, this, I'm not concerned about that, because I, I, I support you and, and your desire, okay? My question to the, to the attorney at this time, again, we, we operate by council rules, which, which give us the opportunity in, in the meeting which we are making, uh, legislation, at any point before the meeting is adjourned, to, to reconsider our action. Now, hear me out now, and I'm saying, I'm saying now, if this was something else, if this was, uh, to do something in, that the mayor would execute within the, within the timeframe of, of, of our rules, with this same, with this same opportunity to reconsider, we afford it. So, so I'm asking the, the city attorney, since, since, since action, I'm, I'm, I'm tracking James, Councilman Green now, if actions in response to our action is now in, in motion, where, where are we in regards to our ability to reconsider something that, that has created a reaction to our action?
Well, well, Miss Creel.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Um, this is not to reconsider, it's to rescind. And Robert's rule makes a distinction, I'm not saying that this is proper or not proper. I'm just saying, when you come to me next time and say, well, he was allowed to reconsider, this is not what this is. This is to rescind, it's a different motion.
So where, where, where does this legislation fall, was this rescinded?
Well, his position, Councilman Flurry, would be that if the council votes to rescind this, then the council would have to vote again on the appeal.
Mr. Creel, I'm, 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 I'm hearing you. But if it's rescinded, then, then does, does it stay on the agenda as, as a, as a legislative item?
It would be placed back on the agenda as a legislative.
So go through another process, we couldn't do it today?
No, no, this, none of this is to be done today, all of this is to be done on the tenth, December the tenth.
So, so, going back to my previous concern, if there was some action, not this action, but action within the, within the, within the, within the structure of our city government, where we passed legislation and, and it was executed within the timeframe in which it allows, is that, is that, is that, uh, uh, is that subject to this, this same type of thing?
Uh, well, I, I can't answer that, the city attorney is researching that, and she may wanna comment on that, but.
I think Councilman Nicholson interests.
Yeah, Councilman Bradford, I appreciate Councilman Green's remarks and yours. Uh, and I note that the, and we descended into the minutia of Robert's rules of order, and I regret that, and I think we should, we should ascend as soon as we can, but that's where we are nonetheless. The, the rule that allows a motion to rescind to be filed provides in part that the motion is not procedurally proper, cannot be made, if something has been done as a result of that vote that the assembly cannot undo, that we cannot undo. In this case, we have been sued, we have suffered a lawsuit, uh, from the party that was dissatisfied with our decision. In my view, that is a thing that we cannot undo. And so regardless of the merits of our previous decision, uh, my position, and I believe Councilman Green's position, is, uh, that the motion is not procedurally proper, and that it is not allowed by the rule which we are discussing. But, but that is something that Miss Creel will have to give us her opinion on, and we'll certainly take that into consideration as a body.
Yeah.
And also, also, Councilman Flurry, Mr. Chair, is it okay?
Yes.
Also, I have one of these towers right next door to my church. If they get this opportunity, then I stand another opportunity of having another tower next door to my church, which the one that's there now is unbelievably tall.
But you, but you're arguing it, you're arguing.
No, I was just letting him know my fears.
We, we, we're arguing the litigation.
No, I'm just standing by.
But it's not on your property, it's on your neighbor's property.
Can I just make?
It's on my property.
Can I just clarify something?
Every time they hit that tower, you get paid.
No, it's on my.
The Lord give it and they take it away.
No, I'm not getting paid for it.
Attorney Creel.
Thirty minutes ago.
Attorney Creel.
I was just gonna say that, uh, our office is looking into it, and, uh, we have not been served with the lawsuit as of yet, as of today, and so I'm not in a position to make any additional comments on the issue.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you said we weren't, we wasn't gonna act today anyway, right?
Right.
This, okay, so we're.
He's just giving, this is just giving notice, then at the next meeting.
Chairman.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Fuller.
Has there not been some discussion with the M P C about correcting or clarifying the policy within the Unified Development Code, so that, that, that whatever inconsistency exists right now would go away, and there would not be that threat? Okay, so, so, Councilman Green, it looks like, once this is sorted out, that the Unified Development Code that's allowed this confusion is gonna get clarified, so you wouldn't have that threat.
Well, the, the person that we bought the land from, Councilman Flurry, they got a hundred-year, uh, deal on it, so, you know, it's just there.
I'm just saying, we might not, you wouldn't have a second one now.
Ma'am.
They're clarifying the code so that you wouldn't have to worry about a second one.
Well, if we got, we got, uh, three weeks, then I can talk to, uh, Mr. Settle and get an opinion from him.
All right, Mr. Turk, Mr. Perkins. Yeah, I have any additional communication.
I do, and I know it's five forty on a Friday, and everybody.
Uh, it's five fifty-one.
Yeah, I completely understand, but there was a couple of things covered in this meeting that I just wanna, I will shortly address, I assure you. Uh, and I'm not gonna get on y'all too much, because y'all did consolidate two council meetings into one. But, uh, the first thing I wanna talk about is public safety in our community. Um, this is one that, uh, I ran on a platform to make sure that our city was safer, and it's one that's near and dear to my heart, considering, uh, the neighborhood that I grew up in here in Shreveport, and the things that I see and hear about all the time. Every time there's a violent crime in our city, me and Chief Raymond talk, uh, about the particular violent crime. We get details, a lot of times if there's a homicide, you know, one of us, both of us might go out to the scene. Uh, I've made far too many of those calls, I've sit in far too many, uh, living rooms of grieved family members throughout our city. Uh, if I could stop it today, I assure you I would, uh, but I am determined to do everything I can to continue to make our city safer, and, uh, Councilman, we appreciate you reaching out to us. Uh, the chief and I had already reached out to a lot of our law enforcement, um, leadership in the area to assist us in an operation, and oftentimes we don't talk about it very purposefully, uh, to make sure that we're going out and doing everything we can, that we're getting every asset that's out there to go into these communities and make sure that they're safer. Uh, I will say that I am still very much dedicated to community-oriented policing. What we've heard today about instances of crime in our city where there are multiple witnesses, and we don't get any information at all, uh, we have to fix that. And the way to fix that is for the citizens to trust the police officers and trust the institutions of this city. Uh, the, me changing a policy and saying community-oriented policing, I can do that overnight, but the culture of our community, changing culture takes a very long time. Uh, so we're, we, we gotta be patient there. Uh, phase one of that is, again, just changing that culture and talking about it in rhetoric and changing policies. Phase two of that culture is my stern belief of putting our police officers in the neighborhoods with substations, and I still hope that that happens. Uh, but on the topic of trust and on the topic of substations, I'll jump over to the topic of the bond proposal. Uh, and I'm gonna be quiet about this for, for some time, I've, I've heard a ton about it, and I'm glad the citizens still are giving us feedback. We always appreciate citizen feedback. Uh, but on that topic of the bond proposal, I'll say to Councilman Bradford, uh, stay encouraged. I know you've been in this fight a very long time, you've got a very long track record on making sure that our city is better, and I appreciate you for it, and multiple, uh, council members as well. Uh, and I say to you, stay encouraged, but I also say to the forty-nine percent of voters out there to stay encouraged. I wanna say to the hundreds of high school students that I spoke to yesterday, uh, about the future of our city, to stay encouraged. And for all the citizens that believe Shreveport can be better, we need you to stay encouraged. Uh, our citizens look to us as leaders for inspiration, uh, and we can't get down on ourselves, because, you know, democracy on one day didn't go in the direction that, uh, a lot of people feel that our city needed. Uh, I ran on a platform because I didn't like what was going on in government. Uh, now I find myself on the other side of that eleven months later. Uh, but I'm just like a lot of those citizens that were, um, that didn't have full trust, didn't think the government was going in the right direction. Uh, so I understand their sentiments, and I'm gonna continue to work on that culture of trust in our community uh, for as long as I sit in this seat. Uh, for those of you who wanna be more educated, when we go out for, uh, other legislations or a future bond, I assure you, I will continue to go to you. We went to churches, we went to organizations, we went to community centers, we continually posted on social media, we did low-tech outreach as well, uh, but again, we're gonna continue to work for you, and we're gonna continue to make sure that Shreveport is, uh. Uh, but again, we're gonna continue to work for you, and we're gonna continue to make sure that Shreveport is, uh, doing as best as it possibly can. I hope everybody enjoyed their Thanksgiving. Uh, I appreciate everybody and love you. Thank you.
I'm sure no council member has any additional communication. And so since there's nothing else, I knew it.